All right. We had a little technical difficulties earlier today, but we're ready to go. So good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission of the City of Moreno Valley. I now call this meeting to order on February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three at six oh five P. M. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Ray Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Joanne Stephan.
Present.
Commissioner Omar Kobian.
Here.
Commissioner Jeff Sims.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Matthew Chen.
Here.
Chairperson Elvin Dejeunay.
Here.
Okay, and Commissioner Kobian will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. How about, thank you. All right, the next item on the, uh, is the approval of the agenda. Uh, do we have a motion and a second?
And I'll approve the, uh, or I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Baker and a second by Commissioner Chen. Do we have some? Now, yeah, I think we do. I think Baker, I think we have a couple of upstains there and Sims on that one.
This is just the approval of the agenda at this time. What I was actually going to note is that it appears as though we are still having some technical difficulties with our per- with our reviewing system. So tonight we will need to go to a voice vote instead.
Oh.
Um, so, yeah, so we're gonna go, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna go old school on it for the evening and just wanted to make that note.
Paper pencil.
Paper pen, well, we're ready.
Ballot? All right, okay, we have a, uh, a vote.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Stephan.
Yes.
Commissioner Kobian.
Yes.
Commissioner Sims.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Chen.
Yes.
Chairperson Dejeunay.
Yes. The motion carries. All right, uh, let's see. Before we hear public comments this evening, I'd ask everyone, I encourage participate to keep their comments respectful towards, um, others, especially towards the individual speaking. Um, I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting and share his or her views about issues concerning our city. But we can accomplish that more as a city and as private citizens by being civil, respectful towards one another in this meeting. During the public comment period for each item, as well as during a public comment period for the items not on the agenda, each member of the public who has signed up to speak will have a maximum of three minutes to speak. Any person wishing to address the commission on any matter, either under the public comments section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearing, must fill out a request to speak form available at the door. The completed form must be submitted to the secretary prior to the agenda item being called by the chairperson. In speaking to the commission, members of the public may be limited to three minutes per person except for the applicant for entitlements. The commission may establish an overall time limit for comments on, on a particular agenda item. Members of the public must direct their questions to the chairperson of the commission and not to other members of the commission, the applicant, the staff, or the audience. Okay, the next item is public comments not on the agenda. Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers at this time, and also we're back up.
Oh, all right. All right, so the next item on the agenda is approval of the consent calendar. Uh, the consent calendar, all, uh, items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may enact a one motion unless a member of the commission requests that an item be removed for a separate action. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after the public hearing item. Question or comments from the public on the consent calendar matter are limited to three minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. Um, at this time, we'll ask if any commissioner would like to pull an item on the consent calendar for a separate vote or comment.
I, I just have a question. If you were not present on the consent, on, on, only on the minutes, right?
Right.
Yeah, so if we, if a commissioner, if like, for instance, I wasn't here on September twenty-two, if, all one by one, or can we just abstain, or do we have to?
So what I'm gonna ask of you, and I, and I apologize, Commissioner Sims, because I didn't, I did, the, I, I tried to recognize which commissioners had missed meetings and informed them ahead of time. So I apologize, I missed that you had missed one yourself. Um, this would be the appropriate time for any commissioners to identify any meetings that they missed, that they would like to abstain from. Um, also, they have, um, if you did view the meeting in its entirety online, you are able to vote on it as well, if that was something that you did prior to the meeting tonight. Otherwise, um, you can abstain from any meetings that you did not attend. So I know that there's a number of minutes, I apologize, we've been trying to catch up. Um, so we are all, with, with the action tonight, we are all caught up on our minutes, though.
I didn't catch, did you get your question answered there? I, I think if, you know, I, I know Baker missed the, missed some, and I missed one, so if, maybe we just pound through one by one, and we could abstain, just vote, but, wait till swoop?
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, well, I think we have to ask if there's any public comments for the consent calendar. Any speakers?
We have no speakers.
Okay. All right, so we have several here. I think we have eight, eight, um, we have July eighth, uh, July twenty-eighth. So do we have a motion and a second for the, the consent calendar in July twenty-eighth?
I, I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar for July twenty-eighth.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Kobian and a second by Commissioner Sims. In it. Okay, the motion is accepted. All right, how about a motion for September twenty-second?
Motion to approve.
Second, sorry.
Okay. Catching up here. All right, that motion is accepted. All right, for the consent calendar for October twenty-seventh?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, and that motion is accepted. And for the consent calendar for November tenth?
Motion.
I'll second.
Commissioner Baker, we need you to select abstain, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. What was that? Hit the wrong one. Okay, got it. Am I on there now?
All right, that motion carries. All right, a motion for the consent calendar for December eighth?
I'll make a motion.
Did I miss, oh, November seventeenth, I'm sorry, I'm one ahead. Uh, a motion for the consent calendar for November seventeenth.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for that one.
I'll second.
And that motion carries. But a motion for consent calendar for December the eighth?
Motion.
Second.
That motion is accepted. All right, a motion for consent calendar, December twenty-second?
Motion.
Second.
All right, and that motion is accepted. It carries. And the last one is for the consent calendar for February the ninth.
Motion.
Second.
All right, that looks like that's all of them. All the motions have been accepted and they carry. All right, all right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the non-public hearing items. And at this time, we don't have any items. And that moves us into the next item on the public hearing. Items will be, item number one, the applicant has requested approval of a amendment, amended condition use permit for a new classroom building approximately seventeen hundred square feet, uh, a shade structure approximately a thousand square feet, and additional parking at the existing Jay Peterson Child Development Center on an approximately one point nine one acre site. Is there a staff report?
The staff report this evening will be given by Associate Planner Gabriel Diaz.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, the applicant has requested the approval of a amended conditional use permit, CUP, for a one thousand seven hundred square foot classroom building and a one thousand square foot shade structure. The project is located within the downtown center zone, is located at the southwest corner of Brodeia Avenue and Nason Street, just east of the Riverside University Medical Hospital. Is within the existing Jan Peterson, uh, Child Development Center. To the north, there is existing, there is a existing mobile home park. To the east is the integ- integrated, uh, care facility, and to the west is a skilled nursing facility. The reason this, uh, CUP is before you is due to the residential mobile home park to the north. Is required if residential is within three hundred feet of the proposed project. Here's the proposed site plan. The, the main access to the site would be off of Brodeia to the north. A secondary access would be from Hospital Road to the south. Additional pri- uh, sorry, additional parking has been provided to the northern portion of the site. Uh, the proposed project would provide thirteen additional parking spaces. Based on our municipal code, uh, only four spaces re- is required for the seventeen foot, seventeen hundred square foot classroom building. The applicant provided a preliminary landscape. Uh, the project has been designed and conditioned to meet the landscape standards of the city. Basically infilling the, uh, the, the center, uh, and it'll be built out. Are the proposed material and elevations of the proposed classroom building is a one-story building, uh, architecturally compatible with the existing, uh, Spanish style of the existing complex with stucco walls and reddish clay tile roof. Environmentally, uh, the project has been evaluated in compliance with the criteria set forth in the California Environmental Quality Act. As designed and conditioned, the proposed project is exempt under CEQA Guidelines one five three three two for infill development. Staff recommendations, staff recommends that the planning commission take the recommended actions as proposed by staff in the staff report. Thank you. Thank you. Um, this concludes staff presentation.
Thank you. Are there any commissioner questions for staff? Well, at this time, would the applicant like to speak? Well, I guess if there's no questions for staff, I, what, what, how about this, are any questions for the applicant? Let me just hit this thing now. Okay. Well, all right, at this time, we'll now open the public testimony. The clerk will call upon each person who has requested to speak. Each member of the public wishing to speak will have a maximum of three minutes to speak on the agenda item. Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public comments at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna stick to the script here. I'm gonna say, you know, I, even though you didn't get a chance to speak, we do always allot you to have time if you want to add any additional information or anything like that. Uh, but I'm gathering, no? Oh, that, all right.
Like I should just fill in some time here, I guess. Um, so my name is Phil Sausado. Uh, I'm one of the founders, along with, uh, Dr. Carl Rowe of, of the Integrated Care Campus and the Jan Peterson Child Development Center. Um, this, this addition, uh, this additional classroom project is actually a, it's a function of a grant we received from First Five, uh, to develop additional classroom space for, uh, infants and toddlers, which are a, there, it's a significant, uh, need for that particular age group, uh, not only here in Riverside County, but across California. And so this is, this is a pretty important project to actually finish the campus. We're actually completing the development of the nine-acre campus, which originally envisioned the, uh, assisted living that's there, which is an eighty-six-bed assisted living, the ninety-nine-bed skilled nursing facility that's there, and our hundred and twenty occupant child daycare center, uh, that is all, those are all currently existing. This will be the final phase of that, uh, development, which we started twenty years ago. So we're thrilled and delighted to be able to bring this project to the city and, uh, thanks to Gabriel for all his help and, and, and helping us to get to this point. And, uh, that's it. We're happy to bring this to the city and, and thank you for your time seeing us tonight.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. All right, given that there's no speakers, I'd like to close the public testimony at this time and move into deliberations.
I, it sounds like a good, uh, project. It, uh, started, it started a long time ago, and it takes time, and it's working through it piece by piece. So goo- good on you and, uh, uh, fully planned if amendment is needed to get this thing complete, then it sounds like a good, good plan. So, hey, yeah. Good, uh, thanks for helping the community. All right.
How do you really feel? All right. I concur. I, I think it's a good project. Anything that's going to, uh, add additional classroom space for children, it's fantastic. And, uh, thank you for doing that business here in our city. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't see an issue with it. I know a lot of people that have used the first five, and, um, I know it had to be a certain, um, age group. So now that you're having the infants and toddlers, because there are parents out there that do need that, and a lot of the daycares did close down during COVID. So there's, there's a need for this. And so I really applaud you for doing this, and I hope you to see more, because I know a few of them, I believe, had closed down. And, uh, so I kind of wish you guys would get more into the city again like you were before, because this is a little far out, but, you know, you need it, you need it. So I'm, I, I, it's, for me, this is a no-brainer. I really, uh, you know, you need the expansion, you need the parking, and we're here to give it to you. Okay.
Well, then, do we have a motion and a second?
I'll, uh, move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two, and thereby, uh, finding the amended conditional use permit of P N twenty-one dash zero zero nine nine project is category exempt from the provisions of the California, uh, uh, rental, our rental man, or, um, let's say CEQA, as a class two exemption, and under the CEQA Guidelines, Section one five three two, three, three three two infill, it's an infill development project, and then also approving the amended conditional use permit, P N twenty-one dash zero zero nine nine, based on the, uh, recitals and evidence contained in the administrative records and finding as set forth in Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two.
I'll second.
Can I just, before we move to the second, I'm sorry, um, can, to clarify for the record, it's a class thirty-two exemption.
Thank you. I missed that, okay, sorry.
Okay. And I'll second.
So that's a motion by Commissioner Baker and a second by Commissioner Stevens. The motion carries. Uh, do we have a staff rep?
The action taken by the Planning Commission this evening is an appealable action. Any interested party that would like to file an appeal may do so within ten days of this action. If an appeal is filed, it must be in writing and directed to the Community Development Director stating the specific reasons for the appeal, along with the appeal filing fee. If any appeal is received, it will be agendized for a public hearing before the City Council. Thank you.
All right. At this time, the next item at the, on the agenda is other commissioner business, and I don't believe we have any, um, the next item agenda is staff comments. Do we have any staff comments at this time?
Uh, thank you, Chair Dejeunay. Um, we, I just wanted to introduce, um, our new principal planner, Catherine Lynn. Um, she has, uh, prepared a forty-minute presentation for you tonight to talk to you about herself. No. So we're, we're happy to have her on. She's been, um, working with us since, um, Tuesday, and this is actually her second public hearing she's been in attendance at.
Fantastic. Forty minutes, huh? Speak slow. All right, the next item on the agenda is, uh, Planning Commissioner comments. Do we have any commissioner comments?
I, I have one. I, um, I do know that some of the other cities, what I've seen, and I thought was a great idea, and I think maybe we should consider adopting, is, um, having, uh, I, I know, do we have a way where, you know, we have our developers that come in and they prevent, they present to us a landscaping plan that's gonna determine a hundred fifty trees this size? Who is actually inspecting that? Because I don't think that's part of the inspection process from the city, which is fine. But one of the things that has been adopted is that the developers actually have to pay an extra money upfront to make sure that those inspections happen, to make sure we're getting the adequate amount of trees for those developments, because I do know that some cities I found that are getting ripped off. They weren't getting the sized trees. And the reason why I ask, because I passed, just passed by, uh, some KB homes, and they put in some trees that looked dead. I mean, they look like you got them off Home Depot, twenty-dollar trees, and I was thinking to myself, did we approve that? And, and I, I can't remember, because it must have been over a year and a half or a year ago. So, um, do we have anything like that? And I don't know if that's a question we have now, but it might be something you want to consider.
I can address it this evening. That's perfectly fine. So the City of Moreno Valley does have, uh, landscape developments, landscape design standards. A lot of our landscape design standards are actually regulated today under California state law, uh, related to what's called water-efficient landscaping ordinance, or a lot of people refer to it as a wheel-o. Um, a number of years ago, this commission actually reviewed that ordinance and had to adopt it, um, when the state imposed it. That was, I want to say it was about two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, approximately, when that ordinance went into effect. Um, so we still utilize that today. It is a, the landscape plan is actually reviewed as a plan check type application, which is an admini- which is an administrative, nondiscretionary review that's completed at a staff level after these entitlements. And as part of that landscape plan, they ultimately identify the size, type, location of trees, locations of shrubs. They also have to, because it is for water-efficient landscaping, they have to identify the amount of water that's being applied to the landscaping versus the actual amount allowable to be applied in a specific area. Lots of fun math to, um, to do. And we ultimately have a checklist by which we review and approve landscape plans. During our inspection process, we do go out and verify that the landscaping is installed per plan, and we also require the landscape architect to certify that its installation was done correctly.
Okay, so there is, I'm sorry, man, I got distracted. So there is a process where they're,
Yes.
make sure that, dot the i's.
There's a number of different steps, and, and, and our planners do go out there. They do verify the landscaping and, um, confirm that it is in compliance. During this time of year, there is some, there are trees that do get, that do die, and some of them just look dead, because they're that small in the winter. And, um, so we have to, you know, we, we, we do go out and inspect, and if there is an issue, ultimately going into, you know, the spring and we find dead trees, um, that is something at times that our code enforcement will ultimately act upon as well to have resolved.
But on new development, like for instance, a KB, there should be a part of the, part of the bonding for the track that there should, then after, after the work is done, isn't there a warranty period, warranty bond put for even the landscape, so that the, if, if after a year they go out, they got, you know, it's Charlie Brown's Christmas out there on every, of every tree.
For anything that the city would ultimately maintain, we do have some provisions for that.
Yeah.
But in terms of, on private properties between KB and the develop, KB and the buyer, that's ultimately a private contract.
Public, the right of.
But in the public right of, yes, there are, there are guarantees, and there are sureties in place for maintenance. Yeah.
I, I appreciate the answer. And the reason why I brought that up, because I know that other cities did not have that secondary inspection process at the very end. And, and includes with these, some of these tilt-ups that, some of these, uh, industrial distribution centers were, I mean, they sometimes are, they're, they're saying they're gonna provide a hundred, hundred and fifty trees, this kind of tree, and what they found was that there wasn't anybody making sure that they were getting the right box-sized trees, and they're planted, and then after they were gone, and there's no way to make sure that they were getting.
Well, well, ultimately, at the end of the day, if it's not installed, they're not gonna get their final occupancy. I, I can tell, I can tell you, I can tell you, we actually have a, a commercial project in town. I'm not gonna name the project, but they have, that, that project has, um, some temporary certificates of occupancy, and one of the notes that we still have is a plan check item before they receive their final C of O is landscaping.
We normally count the trees.
Awesome. That's, that's what I wanted to hear, be counting the trees.
We do.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I got something real quick. Being, being that we have two in our community, I will go on record and save you. Uh, Home Depot, I like your twenty-dollar trees. Just, uh, just wanna say Moreno Valley is supportive of Home Depot. And, uh, you know, I want to thank, uh, Catherine for being here, two meetings in a row. Uh, you must be special. It took me three meetings to get a name plate. You already got one. So, you know, just want to let you know you're special. And, uh, you know, so, and, uh, RSO, thank you for being here. Uh, appreciate you guys. Uh, you know, I feel safe when you guys are here, so thank you.
I definitely appreciate you guys being here. This is fantastic. Keep coming. That's fantastic. No, I was telling them, and I gotta look and count the trees. I just bought one of those KB homes. I don't, I'm gonna go look at the trees now. No, I was telling him, and I gotta look and count the trees, I just bought one of those KB homes, I don't know, I'm gonna go look at the trees now. Any other, uh, commissioner?
Uh, I, I'm looking for an excused absence for whatever the next, uh, the March ninth meeting.
March ninth.
I, I will need an excuse absence for March ninth.
I appreciate that.
We out of time.
Okay. All right, if, um, there are no other commissioner comments, the Planning Commission meeting is adjourned at six-thirty-four P M. Uh, to our next regular meeting on March ninth, twenty-twenty-three at six P M.